Everybody ready?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna start singing in three, two, one. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. Okay, the meeting of Erie County Council is now called to order. Would you all please join me? I think we'll wait because I see Councilman Schenk hasn't returned. And I know how important this is to him. Yeah, see, we waited on you. We had a clear view of the flag while you were gone. But I know how important this is to you. So would you all please join me in opening this meeting by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? All rise, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Did you please indulge me before you do the prayer? I actually would like to have a moment of silence. Just one minute, moment of silence for the 200-plus thousand Americans that have lost their life to COVID-19. Is there an optional prayer or invocation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll do it.
Yes, ma'am.
No man has a right to do if he pleases unless he pleases to do right.
Very nice.
Roll call, Mr. Smith, please. What's nice?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Clear?
Here.
Mr. Rastatter?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Showerman?
Here.
Mr. Schenk?
Here.
Chairman Horton?
Here. Are there any citizens desiring to be heard on the online? Any citizens desiring to be heard online? Hearing or seeing none? I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of the minutes from the previous meeting.
So moved.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Schenk and Showerman. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing or seeing none, roll call on the question.
On the minutes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Are there any reports from the county executive or any of her designees?
Not tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sparker. I'll hear the report from my finance chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee actually met last Thursday, October 1st. And the Finance Committee will be presenting items A through N on the agenda this evening. Thank you very much. That concludes the finance portion of my agenda. And that report, sorry. The other report I'd like to give, Mr. Chairman, is regarding the CARES Act funding. I am so happy to be able to give some numbers as far as how many business, or I'm sorry, nonprofits and municipalities will be receiving CARES Act funding. We have 17,000, or I'm sorry, 17, sorry, municipalities that have eligible expenses that will be able to receive grant money through the CARES Act. This is going to be totaling $850,000, a little bit over that. So that is wonderful. We have, like I said, 17 municipalities in all that have applied and received funding. For our nonprofits, we have 104 nonprofits, including firefighters and fires, the firehouses here in Erie County. There were 107 applications, and there were only three that were not eligible just because of what they are categorized as, as far as nonprofits. So the, yes, 104 nonprofits, so I think that's great news. We're getting money out the door and to our nonprofits and municipalities. And I should be getting the numbers any day now for our small businesses. I'm still waiting on that. But that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Clear. Personnel Chair, Councilwoman Rennie?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee met on Thursday, October 1st. And I am bringing item O to the agenda this evening for our consideration. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Chair, Rennie? Are there any other reports from members of council today?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before I do the citation, could I ask the Finance Chairwoman Clear a question on her report? Is that proper? I mean, I don't know if she has the answer, but...
Can you ask her in the chat?
Well, I was hoping she would be able to tell the, I mean, make the announcement at the meeting.
I'll allow it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, Finance Chair Clear, thank you for the report that you gave. I understand that actually nonprofits have begun to be notified yesterday or today. And do we have a total amount that's been funded? And do we know when nonprofits or when businesses may be funded?
I actually have an email out, Vice Chairman Anderson. I apologize, I haven't heard back yet on when the small businesses are going to be finding out. So I'll answer that first. So I, but I do know that a letter has been drafted that will be sent out to the small businesses. I thought it was today also. I had some small businesses actually call me today and ask if I heard anything yet. But I don't have the names of businesses, nor do I have the amount of small business monies that have already been allocated. I do, I do know just from past conversations that they are looking to do a second round, though, for nonprofits. They are going to be doing a second round for municipalities and for small businesses. Now, to answer your last question, that was me stalling so that I could see if I could find the final amount for the nonprofits. And I don't have a line that, of course, gives me the total amount. The last I heard, it was around 5.5 million. But I don't have that exact number, that was not given to me. But I can get that information to you, Vice Chairman Anderson.
Thank you, Chairman Clear, and thank you, Chairman Horton.
You're so welcome. I believe that a report is going to be generated from Melinda and forwarded to council on who all received what. So that should be forthcoming. You have a citation, Councilman Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask that the full citation be read into the record of council or placed into the record of council. But I just wanted to recognize the name of David Digger Nelson, who was so committed to this community, his spirit, his commitment to sports, to education, to athleticism, to his family. It will never be forgotten, some of his records may never be broken. But his memory and the achievements that he made will certainly never be forgotten. And in particular, I wanted to recognize that we join in with our former county council colleague Kathy Fatika and her family, who shared a special bond with David Nelson and his family. And we want them to know that we're thinking of him and remembering him in our thoughts and in the council record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Would you read that into the record, Mr. Smith?
Mr. David P. Nelson, 1947 to 2020. Whereas David P. Digger Nelson passed from this world on September 24, 2020, at the age of 73 years. Born in Erie, Pennsylvania, to the late Rexford K. and Dorothy Loggett Nelson. And whereas David graduated in 1965 from Strong Vincent High School, where he was named to the scholastic All-American Swim Team on numerous occasions and various individual and team events. He went on to claim the PIAA State Championship and the 50-yard freestyle, and more notably, the world record holder in the 60-yard freestyle. Additionally, David was named as Athlete of the Year. David went on to earn a swim scholarship to Syracuse University, where among many wins, he set a school record in the 50-yard freestyle. And whereas David was honored by his induction to the Erie Sports Hall of Fame in 2006, as well as one of the first inductees to Northwest PA Aquatic Hall of Fame. And whereas, in addition to his love of swimming, David enjoyed fishing and golf with his sons and was a skilled woodworker, often crafting custom golf clubs. No stranger to hard work, David worked for National Fuel Gas, retiring after more than 30 years. Whereas David lived a joyful life, touched the lives of many with a smile and warm personality, survived by his loving wife of 52 years, Mary M. Benacci Nelson, son's John D. Nelson, married to Jennifer, and Robert K. Nelson, his sister Marty Nelson, grandson Jacob Nelson, bonus granddaughters Lauren and Raleigh Roby, his brothers-in-law, Robert Benacci and Joseph Benacci, married to Sandy, and sister-in-law Nancy Cox, married to Michael. Uncle Digger is further survived by his nephews, Tim Benacci, married to Jennifer, and Matthew Benacci, married to Allison. His niece Alexandria Benacci, and many nieces, great nieces and nephews. In addition to his parents, he was preceded in death by his sister Barbara Fitting and a brother, John Nelson, who died serving his country in Vietnam in 1969. Now therefore, we, the undersigned members of Erie County Council, join in with our former county council colleague Kathy Fatika, whose family shared a special bond of friendship with the Nelson family. In celebrating the life of David P. Nelson, a man who exuded a great passion for family, friends, and life, will be forever grateful. May he rest in peace. In witness whereof, we have set our hands on the seal of Erie County this sixth day of October, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other members of council desiring to make a report? Okay, I'm gonna make some comments. Would you like to make some comments, Councilman Schenk? I've seen your box light up like the Hollywood Squares. I'm gonna make a couple of quick comments. My father's, who I always, you know, I didn't think he knew a lot until I was a teenager. And the older I got, the smarter he became. But one of the things that he always said was, "One of the biggest sins in the world is a sin of ingratitude." And so I want to publicly stop for one second and acknowledge our office staff. I want to acknowledge the work of Doug Smith, Nicole Enon, and Jill Pency, and certainly Tanya Fernandez, and the entire voter registration office. It has not been one feat. It has not been a small feat. The members of the election board, you too, are owed a debt of gratitude as well. A lot of conspiracy theorists, a lot of innuendo, a lot of fears and doubts have been embedded into the hearts and minds of potential voters to where probably the most important thing that we could do is ensure the sanctity of the ballot and the process. And without those individuals doing the work that they've been doing, seven days a week. Seven days a week. Seven days a week. And they haven't complained. That's up and, that's above and, and they've been asked to do far more above and beyond what their job descriptions and what their responsibilities here are at council, whether it be in a transitionary role with the Community College Board of Trustees. We were asked to uphold that administrative support. And we upheld it until we could no longer do it, which is great because we want to be independent and we want them to be independent from us and autonomous to the degree that they can, except for budgetary stuff. They have jockeyed their schedules around. I've come into the office a couple of days out of the week just to see how things are going. And the morale, the morale tells it all. The morale is up and the employees seem engaged. And they're energized about what they're doing. And they do realize how important this election is to the citizens of Erie County and how important it is for people to have faith in the system and to know that their vote will be counted. So thank you, Doug, Nicole, and Jill. And I'll get a chance to go back and thank the women in the voters' registration and men in the voters' registration office as well. So cool, those great talk. Okay, moving right along, low old business, new business.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the, move to amend the agenda. I would like to move to bring forth A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, K, and L to a second. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we second Madam Chair, Finance Chair, were you also gonna add Resolution 53?
Yes, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Anderson. I would also like to amend the agenda to add Resolution, is that what it is? Resolution 63?
53.
63, yes, 53.
I'll second.
Thank you.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilwoman Clear and Councilman Anderson. Are you ready for the question? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. And so would we make that item P on your agenda? Resolution 53. Okay, so the amendment, so the, yes, on the amendment of the agenda. Mr. Smith, would you give me the second reading of ordinance number 66 in title only, please?
Second reading of ordinance number 66, 2020, 27th, 2020, Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $2,000 from Library Association to promote submissions of census information.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Anderson and Showerman. Any discussion? Roll call on the question, please.
Ordinance 66, Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 67 in title only, please, Mr. Smith.
Second reading of ordinance number 67, 2020, 2020 Public Health Fund Budget, revised revenue of $116,749 from Great Lakes Restoration Initiative for Lake Erie Small Treatment Flow.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Anderson and Schenk. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
An ordinance 67, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson? Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 68 in title only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 68, 2020, 28th, 2020, General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $58,374 in a GLRI grant, reducing county transfer to public health.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Showerman and Clear. Any discussion? Roll call on the question.
An ordinance number 68, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson? Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 69 in title only, please, Mr. Smith.
Second reading of ordinance number 69, 2020, 2020, General Fund Budget, waiver of the purchasing code to transfer ownership of a 20-year-old incident support vehicle and equipment to Edinburgh for use as borough incident support vehicle.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Schenk and Clear. Is there indeed any discussion? All for the vote.
On ordinance number 69, Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number, oh, wait a minute. I think I skipped one. Wait one second. Is that 69, Doug, or was that 70?
That was 69 we just passed, Mr. Chairman.
I turned my page too fast. I ain't trying to get away from y'all, I'm just... I have a second reading of ordinance number 70, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 70, 2020, first 2020 Public Safety Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of a donated asset by the NWPA ERG with a value of $1,752.
So moved.
I can't...
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Schenk. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the question.
An ordinance 70, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 71 in title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 71, 2020, second, 2020 Public Safety Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $356,856 for receipt of additional 911 surcharge funds.
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Anderson and Schenk. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, call for the vote.
An ordinance 71, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 72 in title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 72, 2020, 29th, 2020, General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $339,856 in additional 911 funds, reducing the transfer to the Public Safety Fund.
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Showerman and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
An ordinance number 72, Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 73 in title only.
Second reading of ordinance number 73, 2020, 13th, 2020, General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of a donated vehicle lease for the District Attorney's Office valued $11,497.
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Schenk and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
An ordinance 73, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number 74 in title only.
Mr. Chairman, before I read it, I just may have written it down wrong, but I had thought that the finance chair's motion was A through L, but I just wanted to make sure.
I'm looking now. I still had the contract as a first.
Okay.
I thought it was A through H and then K and L.
All right, I misheard that. Sorry about that. A first reading of ordinance number 74, 2020, approving a single vendor contract with Westlaw to provide legal research platform for the Erie County Law Library.
So moved.
First, well, that's a first reading. That's okay.
Apologies, yeah.
First reading of ordinance number 75 in title only. I thought that might have been a second, but I still had that as a first, too. Oh, no, actually, that's a second. That's a second. Man, I have the second reading. We have the second reading of ordinance number 75 in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 75, 2020, 31st, 2020 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $148,729 and creation of a new Bureau for Tech and Civic Life Grant.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I just didn't want this to be legally binding and wrong, but I did not call for J to be a second read. If that was my mistake, I apologize. I did not have that from Thursday's notes nor today's.
I actually had that from Thursday's as a second.
Mr. Chairman?
amend the agenda if you want to include, to move J to a second.
Mr. Smith?
I think that would be an appropriate measure, Mr. Chairman. I would very much appreciate it if this could be moved to a second so that we could start utilizing the funds immediately.
I had it marked as a second from the Thursday Personnel Finance. I think it was just an oversight in our caucus. So there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Anderson and seconded by Chairman Clear to amend the agenda to include ordinance number 75 as a second. And so unless there's some discussion, I call for the question on the amendment.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And now a second reading of ordinance number 75, 2020, 31st, 2020 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $148,729 and creation of new Bureau for Tech and Civic Life Grant.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Anderson and Clear. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
An ordinance number 75, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 76 in title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 76, 2020, second, 2020 Gaming Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $401,702 and creation of a line item for the 2020 Community College Budget Request.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Anderson and Clear. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
On ordinance number 76, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 77 of 2020 in title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 77, 2020, approving the 2020 Erie County Community College Budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Anderson and Clear. Is there any discussion? Call for the question.
An ordinance number 77, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Yes.
Could I just make a few comments? I just wanted to thank you and our colleagues, congratulate us as we show support, continued support for the efforts of the people that we have placed in the position to get the community college up and running. I think this will send them a signal that we are there to support their efforts and help them get this off the ground. And this is the first major step forward in doing that, allocating a budget to them so they can begin to move forward with the business of the community college. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Anybody else want to comment to that? It's kind of unusual, but. I will say this. They got a lot of work ahead of them, and I hope they can do so in an independent fashion with County Council just doing what's in our duties and responsibilities and letting the Board of Trustees be about the business of the college. I have the reading of Resolution Number 51. Mr. Smith?
Resolution Number 51, 2020, approving the Intergovernmental Transfer Agreement between the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, Office of Long-Term Living, and the County of Erie.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Showerman and Clear. Is there any discussion? Roll call on the question.
On Resolution 51, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. I have the reading of Resolution Number 52 in title only, please, Mr. Smith.
Resolution Number 52, 2020, Resolution Approving the Fiscal Year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Application and Authorizing Its Submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Clear and Showerman. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
On Resolution Number 52, 2020, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Item, oh, possible appointment of Cynthia Vivarelli to Children and Youth Advisory Board to fill in the unextended, unexpired term in June 30, 2021. I've gone ahead and read it. I'll entertain a motion. It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Anderson and Clear. Any discussion on the appointment? Call for the vote.
On the appointment of Cynthia Vivarelli, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Item P. I have the reading of Resolution Number 53 in title only, please, Mr. Smith.
Resolution Number 53, 2020, approving appointment.
Hold on a second, Mr. Smith.
Could I ask that we, just so. The public that can say that they haven't had a chance to see this, but we read this in its entirety since it's a short resolution.
I have no problem with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
May I please have the reading of Resolution Number 53 in its entirety, Mr. Smith?
Resolution Number 53, 2020, approving appointment of Amy Schwartzbager CPA MBA of Maloney Reed Scarpity and Company LLP as Financial Advisor for Erie County Council. Whereas Erie County Council has retained the services of a financial advisor almost since its inception under the Home Rule Charter to insist in its mission to serve as the legislative body for Erie County citizens. And whereas County Council has spoken with other firms and individuals during 2020 who expressed potential interest in serving County Council in this capacity, resolved, the County Council of Erie County hereby appoints Amy Schwartzbager CPA MBA of Maloney Reed Scarpity and Company LLP as Financial Advisor for Erie County Council in 2020 and 2021.
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Anderson and Shank. Any discussion? Roll call on the question.
On Resolution 53, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Sorry, that's my call.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I did not, I did not see Resolution 53. I still haven't seen it. And so I'm not, I'm not aware of whether there exists any terms or conditions in the form of a contract or understanding between council and who they just hired with regard to their wages or other terms and conditions. Are there, is there any? And how does council intend to proceed in that regard?
Well, we received a proposal from Schwartz, from Ms. Schwartzbager. We reviewed it. We passed a resolution saying that we would. We have yet to discuss. We passed a resolution saying that they would be our choice. We have yet to discuss scope of work. And that is a contractual matter that you will have to look at.
Okay, fine.
Any other comments from you, Brian?
Mr. Chairman, I just need to finish the roll call.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. There was a bit of interruption and it threw me for a loop in the silence anyway. On that Resolution 53, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
And I had Mrs. Rennie as a yay, but I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman Horton?
Yes. Okay, so listen, we get, before we adjourn, we have, I'll speak to two things. I'll speak to the budget process really quick. We have some set timelines that we have, some things that we have to accomplish. We have 30, no less than, no less than 30 days to have a public hearing and get this back to her by December 1st. And so anything that we need to do to secure that last resolution and get moving in that wise, we should do so. Many of you, it's going to be your first budget. And so please ask questions. Don't hesitate to call. It's going to be a little different this year because of, here's that word, Brian, COVID-19. In that we're used to, at some point in the process, we gathered all together in an office and worked out action sheets. And so we'll certainly have to look at doing proceeding and still being able to social distance while being relevant. I mean, while taking care of the business that we have to take care of, which means that many of the department meetings, or if not all, will be Zoom meeting. We won't have them come in traditionally. They come in, Mary knows it because she's come in with the library and we have all these people here and we'd be breathing and shouting all over each other. And so that's going to be, that's going to be a visual, I mean, a electronic or Zoom linked thing, too. You guys can time in on any questions if I can answer them. Maybe if I can't answer them, maybe Mr. Maloney could answer if you have any. I would, I would ask that you would at least go online. In years past, we got, we received, we received disk. But that disk was outdated within a week and we got another disk and it was the actuals and it changed as the working document changed. But it is all online. It is all online. You can come in and print some of that stuff off or print some of, if you're like me, I have a hard time looking at it on the screen, even if I enlarge it, then I can't see the whole field. And this may sound like minutia stuff to you right now, but really it's a, we're going to be moving pretty fast. And secondly, I want to speak to ordinance, even though it's not on the agenda. I hope that you will take the time to study the issue so that when ordinance number 78 and 79 comes before you. Because although I want, I will be looking for it to move to a second as Councilman Anderson wanted to do. And when that time comes. So please do your homework. Look at the ordinance. If you have any questions, you can direct them to Attorney Talariqo. He should be able to provide you with the state law and the opinion. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, just an FYI, we are, with September actuals, we'll get hard copy. Mr. Chairman, just an FYI, we are with September actuals. We'll get hard copies-